And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this November 5th, 2018. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Blanford.
Here.
Dera.
Here.
Whelan.
Here.
Green.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item C is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting October 15.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item E is old business. E1 is pass ordinance 2932 granting a partial property tax exemption for construction of a warehouse addition. Upon its third and final consideration, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Open up for discussion from council. Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 2 is pass ordinance 2933 amending the code of ordinances by removing property located in the southwest corner of Highway 58 and West Ridgeway Avenue from agricultural and placed in the same in Highway Commercial District. Subject to certain conditions, upon its third and final consideration, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is a resolution approving a Highway 20 overlay district site plan for construction of a retail and convenience store to be located in the southwest corner of Highway 58 and West Ridgeway. Subject to certain conditions, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is a resolution approving a Highway 20 overlay district site plan for construction of a retail and convenience store to be located in the southwest corner of Highway 58 and West Ridgeway. Subject to certain conditions, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is a resolution approving a Highway 20 overlay district site plan for construction of a retail and convenience store to be located in the southwest corner of Highway 58 and West Ridgeway. Subject to certain conditions, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I have just a quick question to John?
Sure.
On this particular one, on the traffic study that's being done, could you explain to us a little bit about this traffic study and the improvements that the developers paying for versus what the citizens would pay for and whether or not a right turn, right in, right out type of situation like we did on University Avenue, whether that was an option that was considered?
Yes, I can expand on several of those items. As far as the funding, who would be responsible for what, as far as paying for what improvements, I may leave that to Stephanie or Karen. But as far as the traffic study, it's certainly a challenging study. Unfortunately, Nordic Drive where it's located is a little bit closer than where we would normally like to have an intersection near a highway and an arterial intersection. But we worked with the developer. We knew this was a difficult study, so we also had a peer review done and then worked with that consultant as well and then our own engineering staff to review all of the different options. And so, we looked at a roundabout at the main entrance to their facility, which is the farthest intersection to the west, and a traffic signal at Nordic. And we also looked at a traffic signal at their main entrance and a traffic signal at Nordic. We did consider putting a median through that Nordic Drive intersection as well and doing right in, right out type situation. It was looked at. It's just, it did not operate that well. The Nordic folks, in order to get back to Highway 58, there's some difficulties with that movement. The thought was maybe a roundabout would help that movement, so they could basically make a U-turn at the roundabout and go back to the Highway 58. But the analysis showed that the roundabout starts to break down with that particular movement. So it was deemed that a median through there and right in, right out was not the best option. And so ultimately, with all those considerations, we arrived at a roundabout at the main entrance and a full access at Nordic with several turn lane improvements.
So, I'm sorry, but Nordic remains as it is today, just with the traffic light?
Correct.
And then this main entrance that you're talking is actually west?
Yes.
And there is no intersection currently there?
There's an entrance for two residential properties to the north, but to the south there is no entrance there currently.
Okay. And then the funding as far as the development payment?
Is that, I'm not sure. I can't know that best.
Yes, we're currently working with the developer on that development agreement. I think we've come to an agreement. The total road cost is approximately $4 million. 1.7 million, it would be the developer's responsibility toward those improvements in the roadway.
And would that 1.7 cover the cost of their main entrance?
So, what we did is we looked at all the improvements in the public right-of-way that are needed to make all those movements function, not only at the main entrance, but at Nordic as well, at the full build-out of the development in the future, and also to serve the rest of the development in the corridor.
But my main focus or question is, where they want to put their main entrance, are they paying for it, or are the citizens paying for it?
Well, we didn't parse out all the, for each movement. We looked at the total cost of the whole process and then looked at dividing that up. We looked at each movement to determine the responsibility for each movement and then determined the cost share.
So we don't know whether that 1.7 million covers their entrance or not, you're telling me?
The road project hasn't been fully designed yet, but what we have determined, tried to determine each one of those movements, whether it was at Nordic Drive or whether it was at the main drive, there were multiple turning movements, multiple turn lanes. And so we looked at each one of those movements to determine sort of whose responsibility it should be and then divide it up that way. But we'll have more information on that at your next meeting when we discuss the development agreement.
Okay, so they're paying for their thing would come at another time?
We believe it's their fair share of all the improvements that are needed for their development.
Any further discussion or questions from council?
I guess, and that's happening fairly quickly, isn't it? Isn't there a desire to get this done in a fairly short period of time?
Yes, yes. They have a desire to start work almost immediately. And so, at your next meeting, we anticipate having that development agreement in front of you.
And then, it's my understanding that somewhere in the near future, some work is going to be done on 58 as well?
Yes, the IODOT does have a project planned in '21, I believe, to do some intersection improvements there as well. So likely, we'd probably do that in a series and phase the improvements, so it coincided with the improvements needed with the IODOT.
Thanks. Anything further from council? Then motion second on the table now that calls for roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before I introduce item four, I will have Director Sheets explain the options we have now here on the agenda. Stephanie, if you don't mind, please.
Sure. Let's go back to recalling at the first reading of this rezoning request at the north end of Lake Shore Drive that we had questions about and concerns about drainage. And so, staff indicated that those items are reviewed along with the preliminary plat. And we indicated that first reading that we could hold the final reading with the preliminary plat. At the second reading, I think we answered a lot of the questions and council seemed comfortable with it. So I guess we wanted the maximum flexibility here at this meeting for council to decide if they would like to go ahead and make a motion on the third reading tonight and know that the preliminary plat will follow at a subsequent meeting. Or if council wishes to wait, then you could wait and do the third reading. You could motion to defer this item, so that the third reading and the preliminary plat are on the same meeting agenda. Either way, the council will have the opportunity to consider the preliminary plat when that's moving forward.
Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, just a question. If we don't approve the plan tonight, is there an advantage to the change in the zoning? Are we looking at doing anything else besides R1 to it? Because I just don't see the advantage to waiting on approval, if we know that that's what it's going to be zoned as.
The R1 zoning would be consistent with our future land use map, a low-density commercial, or residential is identified here.
I think we're moving for these options based on feedback we received from council folks the last, or the first two readings of this ordinance. And so to bring it all together, those questions may be answered more towards, or more for those council people at the same time for the development itself as far as passing the ordinance.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to pass the ordinance or defer until the plat is presented to council?
I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? I know normally we don't open up for a deferral, but there is a gentleman here that's going to be gone, I believe, in two weeks. Help yourself if you'd like to have a public comment on this, deferring and/or this project, please. If you don't mind taking your name and address.
Hello. Yeah, I'm Chris Borglam. I live on 3002 Alice Avenue, on the east side of the lake. And I'm speaking for, just on behalf of myself tonight. First, I'd like to thank Tammy Stahl for bringing this to everyone's attention. I helped write the petition that you guys received, also signed that petition. And it was received well by you people and the council showed a lot of concern for it, which I'm sure had some bearing on the way things have went since then. I've followed along closely here. I've stayed in contact with John Wrestler and Brian Winger's engineers and the engineer that we have working for our Lake Association. And just a couple days ago, we were presented with an updated plat. I don't suppose you guys have seen that yet, but I personally am very comfortable that they are moving in the right direction with this and solved nearly every problem that we addressed. The last couple things on there won't be addressed on the plat, but I have been in contact with Brian just as recently as today. And I feel that those other things are going to get addressed also. So, on my own behalf, I'm very comfortable with where the situation is and that all these things will get addressed as well as reasonably possible. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Has been motion and second. Counsel, all in favor say aye.
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 Post nay. Motion does carry. Item F is new business. F1 is a consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion. Unless someone from the council or public requests, not even to be polled for such consideration. Any such requests from council, from the public? Looking slowly here. Hearing and seeing none, I will give an overview of the consent counter. Item A is approve the recommendation of the mayor relative to a temporary reappointment on the Planning and Zoning Commission. B, C, and D are receive and file committee of the whole minutes. Civil Service Commission, Communications, and Departmental Monthly Reports. E is receive and file the biannual report of the community Main Street relative to SMID funds and an economic development grant. F is receive and file the biannual report of the College Hill Partnership relative to SMID funds and the economic development grant. G is approve a request for street closure on Viking Road November 22nd. And H is approving applications for permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Need further discussion from council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Item 2 is a resolution calendar. This, the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion. Unless someone from the council or the public requests, not even to be polled for such consideration. Any such requests from council, from the public? Looking slowly here. Hearing and seeing none, I will give an overview of the consent counter. Item A is approve the recommendation of the mayor relative to a temporary reappointment on the Planning and Zoning Commission. B, C, and D are receive and file committee of the whole minutes. Civil Service Commission, Communications, and Departmental Monthly Reports. E is receive and file the biannual report of the community Main Street relative to SMID funds and an economic development grant. G is approve a request for street closure on Viking Road November 22nd. And H is approving applications for permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Need further discussion from council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Motion carries. Item 2 is a resolution calendar. This, the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion. Unless someone from the council or the public requests, not even to be polled for such consideration. Any such requests from council?
I'd like P.
P, as in Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Item P from the public. Penny X. Okay, anyone further? Hearing and seeing none, I will give an overview of the resolution calendar, minus P and X. A through G are annual resolutions approving various functions of the tax increment financing or the TIF. Item H is approving and authorizing submission of the city's FY18 Annual Urban Renewal Report. I is approving and authorizing execution of a replacement quitclaim deed conveying title to a portion of vacated alley located in Lincoln Park Edition. J is approving and authorizing execution of a FY19 Cooperative Agreement with the Iowa Civil Rights Commission. K is renaming the Cedar Falls Recreation Community Center to Recreation and Fitness Center. L is approving and accepting a permanent utility easement in conjunction with the University Avenue Reconstruction Project Phase 2. M is approving purchase agreements, warranty deed, and easements in conjunction with the West First Street Reconstruction Project. N is approving an agreement for construction engineering services. O is approving the partial release of retainage funds for the Dry Run Creek Sanitary Sewer Improvement Projects. Q is approving the certified, or certificate of completion and accepting of work for the Green Hill Road Extension. R through V is approving various stormwater maintenance and repair agreements. W is approving an agreement for engineering services. Y is approving a supplemental agreement relative to the West First Street Reconstruction Project. Z is approving the final plat for Autumn Ridge 8th Edition. AA is approving a highway corridor and green belt overlay zoning district site plan. AB is approving a central business district site plan. AC is approving and authorizing execution of an offer to buy real estate and acceptance of real estate relative to expansion of the West Viking Road Industrial Park. And AD is approving and authorizing execution of a pre-construction agreement with the Iowa DOT relative to West First Street Reconstruction Project. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar, minus P and X?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second. Need further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Backing up to item P, resolution approving and accepting completion of public improvements in Autumn Ridge 8th Edition. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Now on the table. Any further discussion from council, from the public? Please state your name and address for me, please.
Hi, I'm Jenny Van Doran. I live at 4124 Thrasher Court, Unit 304, at Legis 3. And the development that is the 8th Edition is to the west of that property. And we have a lot of runoff from that property already. It runs down, the sidewalk that is in between, well, the property line runs down the middle of the private sidewalk. And it runs down there, plus now with the hammerhead, it runs down into the southwest corner. And I was hoping, I was talking to Chase just a minute ago, about a swale being put there, so we don't have all that runoff water. Because the west side of our property, with all the rain we get, it is saturated and our lawnmower people cannot get in there. Plus, it is very saturated in that corner and it's hard to walk there.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything further from council? On the table, motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Mayor?
You can now. Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. I didn't vote yet, right?
You didn't vote yet. Yeah, you're good. Are we addressing these concerns in some fashion? Chase, you have anything on that?
I'm going to let Chase speak to that. He's done a little bit more direct review on that, so he'll be able to elaborate a little bit more on that.
I've been out on site and looked at a few different things. Currently, it's built to the accepted plan for the construction plans that were submitted. But we can go out and look if there are any additional items that can be addressed. Some of the items are on private property that were in issue previously that we might not be able to help out with. But anything we can do as part of a new development, we try to incorporate, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chase. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item X reads, "Resolution approving and authorizing execution of an OXPO restoration agreement with the Nature Conservancy." Relative to the Dry Run Creek OXPO Restoration Project, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion second. Need further discussion from council? Any further discussion from council? Please state your name and address for me, please.
Hi, I'm Jenny Van Doran. I live at 4124 Thrasher Court, Unit 304, at Legis 3. And the development that is the 8th Edition is to the west of that property. And we have a lot of runoff from that property already. It runs down, the sidewalk that is in between, well, the property line runs down the middle of the private sidewalk. And it runs down there, plus now with the hammerhead, it runs down into the southwest corner. And I was hoping, I was talking to Chase just a minute ago, about a swale being put there, so we don't have all that runoff water. Because the west side of our property, with all the rain we get, it is saturated and our lawn mowing people cannot get in there. Plus, it
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything further from council? On the table, motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Mayor?
You can now. Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. I didn't vote yet, right?
You didn't vote yet. Yeah, you're good. Are we addressing these concerns in some fashion? Chase, you have anything on that?
I'm going to let Chase speak to that. He's done a little bit more direct review on that, so he'll be able to elaborate a little bit more on that.
I've been out on site and looked at a few different things. Currently, it's built to the accepted plan for the construction plans that were submitted. But we can go out and look if there are any additional items that can be addressed. Some of the items are on private property that were in issue previously that we might not be able to help out with. But anything we can do as part of a new development, we try to incorporate, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chase. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item X reads, "Resolution approving and authorizing execution of an OXPO Restoration Agreement with the Nature Conservancy." Relative to the Dry Run Creek OXPO Restoration Project, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion second. Need further discussion from council? Miss Pop, did you have a comment?
Good evening. My name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main. I'm glad I live in a forward-looking city and I'd like to applaud the city for looking back in this instance. By approving the resolution of the OXPO Restoration Agreement with the Nature Conservancy, the city is participating in an important project in our Dry Run Creek watershed. The following is taken from the benefits of the restored OXPOs by Karen Wilke, the Nature Conservancy of Iowa, published October 31st, 2018. Historically, Iowa was a mosaic of prairie, potholes, wetlands, and meandering streams. Today, less than 1% of those wetlands remain, resulting in an immense loss of water storage and wildlife across the Iowa landscape. OXPOs are one example of a wetland feature that has diminished over the years. OXPOs are old stream meanders cut off from the current stream channel. Iowa's OXPOs have filled in over time due to soil erosion. Watersheds can benefit from OXPO restoration by providing more storage for excess floodwaters, improve nutrient cycling, and sustaining water year-round for fish and wildlife to thrive. I encourage the city to continue to partner with the Nature Conservancy in the future for OXPO projects in our Dry Run Creek watershed. Thanks for your time.
Miss Pop? Anyone further? Good motion and second. Counsel, requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is a motion to allow bills and payroll.
So moved.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item H, does council have any referrals this evening? Item I, does council have any update? Item J is to go to executive session to discuss property acquisition per Iowa Code, Section 2151J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. This is to follow public forum. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is a motion to allow bills and payroll.
So moved.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item H, does council have any referrals this evening? Item I, does council have any update? Item J is to go to executive session to discuss property acquisition per Iowa Code, Section 2151J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. This is to follow public forum. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'll voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move on to public forum, I want to read a reply that I personally sent to folks who requested an agenda item to have a public meeting on public safety. It does read, in part, "These requests don't come often. I thought it did deserve an explanation." In part, it reads, "Dear Sharon, retired firefighter and stand-up for Cedar Falls safety Facebook page. Thank you for the request of placing a public forum for public safety on the agenda. I am denying this request in most part for the reasons listed below. If history is any lesson for those that lived through the mid-'90s, this would not be a productive meeting but only anti-PSO gathering. I've always appreciated your service to the city of Cedar Falls. However, I will not allow a formal gathering whereby staff is barraged by a group of folks who have demonstrated the propensity to impugn staff and only seem to care about dividing our great community, even after presented the facts such as the squad car fire behind City Hall. Lastly, we have confirmed that Stand Up For Cedar Falls is registered at an address in Hudson and was at least established, if not administered, by a current Cedar Falls firefighter and his spouse. Sincerely, Mayor Jim Brown." I will now move up to the public forum. Speakers have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Okay, we're going to, hang on, folks. We're going to sit down. I'll call you folks out. Just happy to raise your hand if you would, please, just so we avoid the construction, or congestion. And to keep code, we will have folks in here. We're going to take our time. You get five minutes to speak and have everybody in the chamber speak. And then from there, we will move folks who are in the overflow room and they'd have their opportunity as well, just so we avoid the construction where Lisa is helping out. And again, avoiding these sort of lines in terms of the public comment that we're here to hear from. So ma'am in front there, I know you were here very early. Please state your name and address.
My name is Kathleen Kerr. I reside at 3003 Winter Ridge Lane. And I am, my affiliation, I am retired as a professor at University of Northern Iowa. I have been a resident of Cedar Falls, a taxpayer here, and a property owner here for over 29 years. I very much appreciate what Cedar Falls has to offer. In fact, we've just changed our phone service, or we'll be doing it tomorrow morning, to Cedar Falls Utilities, which is extraordinary, exemplary. We have also appreciated in the past very fine service from the Police Department and from the Fire Department. At this point, though, I wish to express my concerns. There are many people who can be much more specific. And I know you have all of the various data, including objections, to the PSO program. I believe that there are people who are professional firefighters who would be far more qualified than I to speak, although I gather they are not allowed to speak here tonight. I also would hope that there would be no further gag orders. As owner of property, taxpayer, and also owner of rental properties, I have concern, not necessarily for my property, that's what insurance is for, but for myself and my family, my tenants who are my friends, and all of the residents of Cedar Falls, whether they're the regular population or whether they are visiting here. I know when you look at population, that does not account, for instance, for a huge inflow of people, for instance, for homecoming games, et cetera. I am very much in support of having a full, professionally trained as firefighters, full contingent available at all fire stations, rather than waiting for backup from PSOs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll go over to this side. Gentleman Larson, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kent Larson. I live at 4928 Kisada Avenue in the Nordic Ridge area. Recently, we had a house that was lost in a fire. And so, I saw the devastation that it causes for one of my neighbors. And that was a rough thing to watch, is that their life burned before them. To give you a little bit about myself, my great-great-grandfather was the first blacksmith in this town. So, we have filled part of your cemeteries out here. And we go out there every year to visit that and aunts and uncles that are buried there. I have served the military, as have my wife. We have been overseas. We've done DoD, Air Force, Army, Reserve work. And my wife is currently a disabled veteran and a nurse at Covenant. Our children graduated from this high school. And we have thoroughly enjoyed Cedar Falls. It's a big city with a small-city flavor. It's a terrific town. I want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you do for us as voters and citizens. And I'd like to thank everybody behind me for showing here their concerns of what's in front of us. I did work as the state director of a nonprofit military organization where I serviced all 99 counties of Iowa in the first responder division. In those 24 months that I worked that position, I met 7,500 law enforcement officers, 6,500 firefighters, and 1,500 EMTs. Give or take 10 either way, all right? So I got to break bread with men.
Plus, it is very saturated in that corner and it's hard to walk there.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. Anything further from council? On the table, motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Mayor?
You can now, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, I didn't vote yet, right?
You didn't vote yet, yeah.
Are we addressing these concerns in some fashion?
Chase, you have anything on that?
I'm gonna let Chase speak to that, he's done a little bit more direct review on that, so he'll be able to elaborate a little bit more on that.
I've been out on site and looked at a few different things. Currently, it's built to the accepted plan for the construction plans that were submitted. But we can go out and look if there are any additional items that can be addressed. Some of the items are on private property that were in issue previously that we might not be able to help out with, but anything we can do as part of a new development, we try to incorporate, so.
Okay, thanks Chase. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item X reads, "Resolution approving and authorizing execution of an OXPO restoration agreement with the Nature Conservancy relative to the Dry Run Creek OXPO Restoration Project." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Ms. Pop, did you have a comment?
Good evening, my name is Penny Pop, I live at 4805 South Main. I'm glad I live in a forward-looking city and I'd like to applaud the city for looking back in this instance. By approving the resolution of the OXPO Restoration Agreement with the Nature Conservancy, the city is participating in an important project in our Dry Run Creek watershed. The following is taken from the benefits of the restored OXPOs by Karen Wilkie, the Nature Conservancy of Iowa, published October 31st, 2018. Historically, Iowa was a mosaic of prairie, potholes, wetlands, and meandering streams. Today, less than 1% of those wetlands remain, resulting in an immense loss of water storage and wildlife across the Iowa landscape. OXPOs are one example of a wetland feature that has diminished over the years. OXPOs are old stream meanders cut off from the current stream channel. Iowa's OXPOs have filled in over time due to soil erosion. Watersheds can benefit from OXPO restoration by providing more storage for excess floodwaters, improve nutrient cycling, and sustaining water year-round for fish and wildlife to thrive. I encourage the city to continue to partner with the Nature Conservancy in the future for OXPO projects in our Dry Run Creek watershed. Thanks for your time.
Ms. Pop? Anyone further? Good motion, second, council, requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is a motion to allow bills and payroll.
So moved.
Motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item H, does council have any referrals this evening? Item I, does council have any update? Item J is to go to executive session to discuss property acquisition per Iowa Code, Section 2151-J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. This is to follow public forum, is there a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move on to public forum, I want to read a reply that I personally sent to folks who requested an agenda item to have a public meeting on public safety. It does read, in part, "These requests don't come often, I thought it did deserve an explanation." In part, it reads, "Dear Sharon, retired firefighter and stand-up for Cedar Falls Safety Facebook page. Thank you for the request of placing a public forum for public safety on the agenda. I am denying this request, in most part for the reasons listed below. If history is any lesson for those that lived through the mid-'90s, this would not be a productive meeting but only anti-PSO gathering. I've always appreciated your service to the city of Cedar Falls, however, I will not allow a formal gathering whereby staff is barraged by a group of folks who have demonstrated the propensity to impugn staff and only seem to care about dividing our great community, even after presented the facts, such as the squad car fire behind City Hall. Lastly, we have confirmed that stand-up for Cedar Falls is registered at an address in Hudson and was at least established, if not administered, by a current Cedar Falls firefighter and his spouse, sincerely, Mayor Jim Brown." I will now move up to the public forum, speakers have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Okay, we're gonna, hang on folks, we're gonna sit down, I'll call you folks out, just happy to raise your hand if you would, please, just so we avoid the construction, or congestion. And to keep code, we will have folks in here, we're gonna take our time, you get five minutes to speak and have everybody in the chamber speak, and then from there, we will move folks who are in the overflow room and they'd have their opportunity as well, just so we avoid the construction where Lisa is helping out, and again, avoiding these sort of lines in terms of the public comment that we're here to hear from. So ma'am in front there, I know you were here very early, please state your name and address.
My name is Kathleen Kerr, I reside at 3003 Winter Ridge Lane, and I am, my affiliation, I am retired as a professor at University of Northern Iowa. I have been a resident of Cedar Falls, a taxpayer here, and a property owner here for over 29 years. I very much appreciate what Cedar Falls has to offer. In fact, we've just changed our phone service, or we'll be doing it tomorrow morning, to Cedar Falls Utilities, which is extraordinary, exemplary. We have also appreciated in the past very fine service from the Police Department and from the Fire Department. At this point, though, I wish to express my concerns, there are many people who couldn't be much more specific, and I know you have all of the various data, including objections to the PSO program. I believe that there are people who are professional firefighters who would be far more qualified than I to speak, although I gather they are not allowed to speak here tonight. I also would hope that there would be no further gag orders. As owner of property, taxpayer, and also owner of rental properties, I have concern, not necessarily for my property, that's what insurance is for, but for myself and my family, my tenants who are my friends, and all of the residents of Cedar Falls, whether they're the regular population or whether they are visiting here. I know when you look at population, that does not account, for instance, for a huge inflow of people, for instance, for homecoming games, et cetera. I am very much in support of having a full, professionally trained as firefighters, full contingent available at all fire stations, rather than waiting for backup from PSOs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll go over to this side, gentlemen, Larson, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Kent Larson, I live at 4928 Kiesada Avenue in the Nordic Ridge area. Recently, we had a house that was lost in a fire, and so I saw the devastation that it causes for one of my neighbors, and that was a rough thing to watch, is that their life burned before them. To give you a little bit about myself, my great-great-grandfather was the first blacksmith in this town, so we have filled part of your cemeteries out here, and we go out there every year to visit that and aunts and uncles that are buried there. I have served the military, as have my wife, we have been overseas, we've done DoD, Air Force, Army, Reserve work, and my wife is currently a disabled veteran and a nurse at Covenant. Our children graduated from this high school, and we have thoroughly enjoyed Cedar Falls, it's a big city with a small-city flavor, it's a terrific town. I want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you do for us as voters and citizens, and I'd like to thank everybody behind me for showing here their concerns of what's in front of us. I did work as the State Director of a nonprofit military organization where I serviced all 99 counties of Iowa in the First Responder Division. In those 24 months that I worked that position, I met 7,500 law enforcement officers, 6,500 firefighters, and 1,500 EMTs, give or take 10 either way, all right? So I got to break bread with many fine men and women, they told me their stories, shared their lives with me, and some of them died in the line of duty right after I met them, some a little bit later on, so I do understand the sacrifices of their families and what they do for our community. I also spoke at the Ames Firefighter School at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, and I do the annual trip to the Firefighters Memorial down in the Iowa City area. I'm very dedicated to first responders in the state of Iowa. I have founded and commanded the very first and only, first responder only, fallen heroes honor guard of Iowa. So I am very dedicated to these people and what they do for us. I bring up these facts to point out that I care and I respect all first responders. And what I want to go to into here is whenever you start something new anywhere as a person, it takes certification, practice, and years in service. Whether it's, I've seen volunteer departments throughout Iowa where there's 15, and I've seen the largest fire departments in Iowa, along with law enforcement. I've been in all the dispatch centers throughout the state of Iowa in 50 counties, so I've seen how each one of these agencies work and how they support themselves. Volunteer departments, we've got mayors, we've got cops, store owners, blue collar or white collar workers, everybody throws in and they all go to the fire. We've got paid-on-call, which is similar to volunteer, except for they're paid to show up. We have professional departments that are smaller but have paid-on-call and volunteers. I just, Clive comes to mind, I'm not trying to get specific on comparing, but that's just one that comes to mind for me, and they all work very well. Then we have professional-only departments, where they're fully staffed and the pros show up, okay? And they have these 24-hour shifts with two days off. If they are understaffed or a fire, they call it either the A shift, B shift, C shift, whichever one is on call at the time. What I have seen here is Cedar Falls, as we have melded into the PSO program, where's the clock at? I don't want to over-
You're good, sorry, nope, you're good.
Is that it's worked very well to this point. We are short-staffed on firefighters due to safety issues, which I do understand, after working with everyone in all these different aspects of fire protection. I have spoken to chiefs, to law enforcement, to active firefighters, I've spoken to every firefighter at every level you can think of in the last three weeks. I've seen dash cam, I've seen helmet cams, I've seen everything, and I call this city my home now. The only thing that really has upset me about this is the bashing. Sorry, I gotta get myself. I don't like seeing our fine city bash you people, and I don't like seeing what's been going back and forth. It's not the way to solve issues like this. After reviewing everything and seeing what we have currently for staff and where we're at, my personal opinion, after talking to everyone, I do support moving the four PSOs over to the Fire Department. I understand that three are Marines, always, once a Marine, always a Marine, I was Army, so sorry about the cord, you guys are fine. Two of them have 14 years of experience, either as professionals or volunteers, I can see and understand them being placed into a lower supervisory role as they train through the years and then move along there. But the ones that have three years, the two with three years or less, I do not see them as being in supervisory roles, although it seems that that's what I've heard, okay, only because of lack of experience. Also, we have firefighters that are professionals that have been down there for years, and I think they should be offered.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, up.
All right, Jackie had the yellow card and I-
I didn't see it, I'm sorry. So anyway, thank you.
Appreciate it. There's one down here, please come in.
Joshua Solentik of 1008 Rockland Street. In this photo, you will see my house after firefighters extinguished the first fire that was only isolated to the kitchen with smoke damage throughout the house. Fire crews were called back out for, later for a rekindle. This was on May 1st, 2017. These next two photos were taken by our neighbors, a side view and a front view of my house burning down on, early on May 2nd, 2017. In less than 24 hours of the first fire, this is what's left. I've lost everything, so did my brothers and my parents. Why? Public Safety Director, I hear you say at the October 15th City Council Meeting about all the experience and numbers ready to combat fires in Cedar Falls. If and when they occur, but my house, that was already at risk of a rekindle, was ignored, and for whatever reason, no one from the city has explained to my parents why or even taken responsibility. Public Safety Director, it is your job to keep residents and the city safe, and you failed to do your job. As a result, fire destroyed my house and damaged my neighbor's house. In these photos, you will see my bedroom and my little brother's bedroom. On my bed, you can see the roof that caved in on it. This is why I cannot sleep at night. The ceiling also fell on my brother's bed. Public Safety Director, please tell me tonight, where were your PSOs that were already out on patrol? You are the Public Safety Director, the one in charge, why didn't you tell any of them to keep an eye on my house? That is your job, right? I'm struggling to understand, and it's making me physically ill with PTSD. I do not want to hear about how Cedar Falls has more personnel responding to emergencies than at any time in its history. I'm 13, and I know that's false. Again, if it, if in fact this statement was true, my house would not have burnt down. I don't understand how and why my family left with a standing house on May 1st, 2017, and less than 24 hours later, this is what was left. I don't get it. If this was your kid's bedroom, what would you say to them? If it was, if I was your kid, what would you tell me?
Thank you. I see a hint up here in front, come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff administrators, my name is Chris Archbarger. I did live at 3614 Beaver Ridge Circle. My fire was right before the Yoder's fire, March 5th, 2017. I'm here tonight to thank you and the city administrators and leadership for the vision you've had for our community on so many fronts, but in particular in the area of public safety. Couple of speakers have mentioned professional firefighters. I take umbrage with the thought that a PSO in uniform fighting a fire is not a professional, or that a volunteer in uniform fighting a fire is not a professional. They're trained, and in my case, as I stood and watched my home burn, I watched the PSOs pull up in their SUVs, jump out, dressed at the back of their vehicles, and go up to help the other firefighters who had arrived on the scene. If you've not had the experience of your home burning down, I can tell you, it's not a pleasant experience. We lost everything. We were able to save the stuff in the garage, so it's the first time I've really been glad that I leave everything I have in the garage. You know, I've been in this community for a long time, I've been an employer for over 40 years. I've had employees who didn't like some of the decisions I made, and I let them know that the sidewalk isn't crowded. You know, you are charged with the responsibility to make a decision that's best for all of us. To me, I watched the firefighters at my home, PSOs and professional firefighters alike, I couldn't tell the difference. They were all pros to me, and they brought my fire under control. They were on scene for hours, they poured through all of the rubble. I couldn't thank them enough. I'll never be able to thank them for coming to my home and doing what they could to save our neighborhood. Now, my wife said I could sleep through World War III, and she alleges that I snore, so she wears hearing aids, or hearing plugs. So when the fire broke out, it was pitch dark, and I thought I heard in my dream someone breaking into the house. I tried to reconcile the sound of broken glass with the sound in my mind, and I startled enough to sit up. Our home was three stories, it had a lot of glass, a lot of windows, and they were exploding from the heat of the fire. As I pushed my wife to wake her, because she couldn't hear the alarms and she couldn't hear the fire, I looked through the master bath, over the loft, into the kitchen, and it was bright orange. And I said to her, Kathy, the house is on fire, get up, get up. Well, that quick, she was out of bed and on the steps saying, "Every man for himself." Apparently, she didn't care if I got out or not. I can't make light of this, I mean, I know the pressure you're under to maintain the PSO model, I believe in it. It does put more people available, more of the time, to fight fires. It also puts more people on the street to fight crime. I've been an advocate, a citizen advocate of government consolidation and cost efficiency for my entire career. I've worked on consolidating insurance, consolidating the assessors' offices, and consolidating the health departments in the city of Waterloo. In every case, it brought about savings. I believe this model will ultimately bring about savings for Cedar Falls, and I plead with you to stay the course, regardless of the pressures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archbarger. Mr. Solentik, I'm gonna ask you to not flash those cards, please, everyone up here deserves to have a voice and to have not be a distraction, if you would, please. Anyone further? Mr. Miller, it's fine, sorry, we'll, okay, thank you, yep, that's fine. Name and address, please.
My name's Kevin Krog, I'm at 5051 Nordic Ridge Drive, my house burned down in July. I'm against the PSOs, just based on my experience, and I can only speak from what happened to me on my night. The first truck was, took 10 minutes to get there, ironically, we had a fire station two blocks away. The truck that would have made a difference took 19 minutes, at that time, my neighbor's house was on, was catching fire too. And just basically, talking to other people that, around Waterloo and some of the other places, I'm just against it, just based on, I think it's better to keep things separate for the fact that professionals intermixing what they do, I think can cause confusion, and there's a lot of training, I think people seem to think that what firemen do is easy, just based on we can put somebody else in it, and I know about cross-training and different things like that, but in my experience, just on how my fire went, it wasn't smooth, and I got a lot of apologies. Not blaming, blaming, just looking back, things didn't go well. Fire chief did apologize too, and I did appreciate that too, but it wasn't a smooth process. And just ironically, like I said, two blocks away, we had a fire station, and I know we're building this big elaborate thing, but I just think, you know, having my house where it was, we should have had a little bit quicker response time. The fire chief did say that they were out training west of Cedar Falls, and my cousin that lives in Hudson actually got here before the truck, the one with the ladder would have made a difference, took 19 minutes to get that there, so my wife is here too, and she encouraged me to come and say something. I've kept my mouth quiet, and I'm more of a listening and learning type person, but I've lived in Cedar Falls 48 years, went to school all through elementary, high school, graduated from UNI. My folks are buried up in the cemeteries here, so am my grandfolks. My grandfather was a city councilman for 20 years, so I guess I'm a lifer here and appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you for coming. Someone back here, the back row, you're welcome to come up, I'm sorry, not the back-back row, the two there, sorry, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tanya Gefford, I live at 3701 Beaver Ridge Circle. I'd like to thank all of our civil servants in the fire and the police departments for their passion and service that they provide us each and every day, but as a mother of three young boys and a taxpaying citizen, I am very concerned with this PSO agenda that you're pushing. What worries me the most is the fact that in the last month, we have had five experienced firefighters leave the department, eight in the last 18 months. That's about a quarter of our fire department, and they were not fired, they left. Why are these men and women leaving, according to the firefighters that I pulled and had around my kitchen table? It's because they don't feel safe in their own jobs. Previously, just to apply for a firefighter job, an applicant had to already have finished their firefighter one and EMT training just to apply. They had to take a written exam, an oral interview, and an agility test. Now you're asking us to accept cross-training as an acceptable alternative to fully-trained firefighters? Iowa's a civil service state, there's rules that are supposed to be followed in an application and testing process. So I ask, where are the results for these firefighter one and agility tests for these PSOs? Can they crawl up my stairs in a blazing house with all their gear on, carry down my 120-pound kid? What about my 225-pound husband? We as taxpaying citizens deserve to see these testing results for these PSOs. And the bigger question, are the tests proctored by state training bureaus? Are they proctored by locals without oversight? We as taxpaying citizens would want answers, we want the services we are paying for, which is a fully-trained firefighter one EMT fire department, fully-trained, fully-staffed. Why has it been said so many times in this council that the city will never hire another career firefighter? In fact, there's not been a list to hire from for firefighters since the fall of 2015. Why is this city so against career firefighters? If money's the problem, where's the reports and documentation to support this? A newly-trained firefighter has an incoming-based salary of $44,900 compared to a new incoming police officer base of $58,500, plus the 11% increase in cross-training to PSO salary. That's about $76,500, a $21,000 difference. That's one officer covering one part of a 24-hour shift of a career firefighter. This math doesn't compute. The use of PSOs work well in larger areas with cities that have extra fire stations to pull from, that have round-the-clock, fully-trained firefighting staff to pull from. I said extra fire stations, more fire stations, more fully-trained firefighters. These PSOs, great addition to a fully-trained, fully-staffed fire department. While I appreciate a police officer willing to cross-train, I ask you, would you give a firefighter a gun after, and help them, have them help in a hostile takedown situation after just learning to shoot? Why are you putting police officers in charge of the fire department? Would you put a firefighter in charge of the police department? I ask you all these questions. At the council's Western Home Meeting last week, it was said, quote, "One of our main goals with this initiative over all these years is to increase the police department." Increase it now, our goal is 50% in the next two to four years, putting more cops on the street, more cops busting the bad guys," end quote. It was also said at that meeting that you looked at the FBI violent crime statistics per 100,000 population, and I quote, "The violent crime in 2016 per 100,000 population in the US, 379, the Midwest, 378, Iowa, 290, Cedar Falls, 66," end quote. This means our city is already very safe, our officers are doing a great job, so why in God's name are you wanting to hire 50% more police officers? Staff our fire department properly. We are not against police officers, we love them, we need them, we want them, but this begs the question, ladies and gentlemen, who is your beef really with? Why are you trying to oust our firefighters? Is it the union? Go after the union, leave us with a fully-trained fire staff. Your public safety fact sheet, you listed a firefighter-based salary of $61,701.12. It takes 17- It takes 17 years to reach this level, 17. Your firefighter annual days you worked, of work, you purported 120, thank you. That is 120 days of 24-hour shifts. That equals 368-hour days. This information creates a skewed view and this information you guys put out to the public, this is an atrocity to skew the information in this manner. We pay for, we want a fire department that employs firefighters that are trained to national standard staff by enough ready firefighters that an immediate attack, not waiting for PSOs to show up. They are a great assistant, but we need an immediate attack available. And as a taxpaying citizen, I question your ethics in putting out this information and against you ridding us of, and against, and with the direction you're taking the city's fire and police services. We want you to cease and desist in this effort. We do not agree with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a football game. This is not a football game. We will hold ourselves in a high level of decorum. Folks deserve to be heard and as well as folks deserve to be speaking as well. Please contain yourself. There was another one back there. Please come on up.
I live at 9020 Beaver Meadows Lane. I guess the first question, I, I have several questions, actually. My first one was, because I got one of those mailers in the mail as well. I wanted to know about how much that actually costs, meaning the cost of printing it, mailing it, and the time involved to develop that. Why was there not a side-by-side comparison of the PSO versus firefighter cost? My next questions are, how will PSOs respond to vehicle accidents? Will they be texted with what their response job is supposed to be? Or will they decide how to respond on their own? Will the city be purchasing extrication equipment also to be carried in multiple police vehicles? And why aren't PSOs being trained to EMTB level with the need for emergency medical assistance so high? Since you're trying to eliminate the firefighters, how about the expense of contracting EM services out? Is it on a on-call basis? And does Wheaton-Franiscan have the fleet and staff to handle the influx of the calls? Where does the money from you and I, or why does the money from you and I for fire protection go to the city's general fund instead of supporting our fire department? Why are the police officers and firemen under a gag order? Why can't we hear from them about the program without them being silenced? A public forum where all sides can be heard is what we're still requesting.
Thank you. Other folks, gentleman there, Mr. Miller? And we'll go back that direction after that.
Mark Miller, 2929 Waterbury Drive, Cedar Falls. Lived in Cedar Falls for 64 years. Should I be concerned? Fire safety in Cedar Falls? That was my question. The PSO program has been out here for a while. It's been in the news a lot in the last few months and I wanted some questions answered, so I drafted a few and I stopped at the fire station and dropped them off and left my phone number and received answers back a day or two later. And then I came down and met with city staff with the same questions to get answers from city staff to satisfy what I wanted to know about the PSO program. So I'll run through those quickly. Question number one, have response times been the same, worse, or better with using public service officers slash PSO? Firefighter response, response times for the apparatus are the same. Cedar Falls staff, PSOs can be there first and assess the situation or even put out the fire before the firefighters arrive. Good example is the mobile home fire where the fire was knocked down by PSOs before firefighters could arrive and PSOs could tell firefighters that they thought three people are inside and their approximate locations. All three people were saved. Number two, have the PSOs been adequately trained to perform the responsibilities when called to a fire? Firefighters, PSOs have been trained to the level of firefighter one, which is the basic set of skills the NFPA has established that a firefighter should know. Cedar Falls, yes, a newly hired firefighter would also be at the firefighter one level. There's a month, there's monthly training and it can take six months to a year to train a PSO to level one. You must also pass both a skills test and a book test to become firefighter one level. Question, are we keeping both firefighters and public safety officers safe when working a fire? Firefighters, fire scenes are inherently dangerous, but firefighters and PSOs always work as safe as possible. Cedar Falls, yes, we are working safely. Firefighters and PSOs train together and will make every effort to save lives and property without taking undue risks. Why are we using PSOs to fight fires? Response times, costs? Firefighters, PSOs can augment the number of firefighters on a scene. A PSO can arrive before a fire apparatus. Cedar Falls, better, more efficient use of personal and tax, personnel and tax dollars. PSOs can be out patrolling the streets and take the call and be there first to start planning the fire attack. PSOs can also respond if more personnel are needed to fight a fire or assist with another emergency. How many fires have we averaged over the last five years? Firefighter response, from 7/1/13 to 6/30/18, Cedar Falls Fire Department averaged 66 fire-related responses per year. The five-year average for total responses is 2,212 responses per year. Cedar Falls, the structure fires average six per year. The fire department also assists on medical calls and some calls are handled before firefighters arrive by a PSO responding first and taking care of a situation. An example is a rag or cooking fire. Fire calls have declined 60% in the last 40 years. What are firefighters' responsibilities when on duty, but there are no calls on that shift? Firefighters, other responsibilities include maintaining and checking equipment, training, inspections, code enforcement, public education, record-keeping, report-writing, street study, public assistance, scheduling, and buildings and grounds maintenance. Cedar Falls response, there will be some efficiencies as PSOs can do some additional police work while on duty as a firefighter. There's some idle time on the fire shifts and people with more skills can perform other duties during that idle time. The public safety model is more efficient, safer, and cost-effective.
One minute, Mark.
What is the normal shift for a firefighter? Cedar Falls fireworks, 24-hour shift in a 3-4-3 shift. Cedar Falls response, firefighter works 10 days a month, 24-hour shift, means you would work on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, off on Tuesday and Thursday, and then have four days off. How much overtime is used by firefighters? When is that used? Firefighters, overtime is used for staffing shortages and emergencies. Cedar Falls, overtime cost for 2017 was $110,000. The estimate for 2018 is $215,000. Last question, how much overtime is used for PSOs when fighting fires? If a firefighter responds, if a PSO responds while on police duty, there is no overtime. If a PSO responds while off-duty, overtime occurs. Cedar Falls, if a PSO responds while, while off-duty, overtime occurs, a cost of less than $10,000 a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Someone else over here yet? Yes, ma'am, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. My name is Linda Hall and I live at 3917 Beaver Ridge Circle. On the evening of February 5th, 2018, my husband and I watched as our neighbor's house burned to the ground. We watched as a handful of firefighters fought a losing battle to contain a fire that had gotten horribly out of control. This fire was the second devastating fire to hit our rural neighborhood in 10 months. It was a call to action for our neighborhood. Members of our neighborhood took up a collection and raised the funds to put in a rural fire hydrant in our neighborhood. We now have that precious water supply that we need should tragedy strike our neighborhood again. Last week, an article in the Waterloo Courier appeared about the PSO model in Calamazoo, Michigan. Having been born and raised in Calamazoo, Michigan, I think I can speak from a unique perspective on this issue. Calamazoo and Cedar Falls share a lot in common. They are both terrific cities to work in and raise a family. However, there are unique characteristics that make the Calamazoo model successful. Calamazoo has a population of approximately 76,000 people. The city is surrounded with common borders to the communities of Portage, Ashdod, and Comstock. Those outer communities have their own fully manned fire departments and are able to have a 15- to 20-minute response time should a fire occur within the city limits of Calamazoo. Portage alone has three manned fire stations. Comstock has three fire stations. Ashdod has two fire stations. With a population of 76,000 people in Calamazoo, Calamazoo has seven fire stations, which means that there is one fire station for approximately every 10,000 people. By comparison, Cedar Falls, which has a population of approximately 42,000 people, has two manned fire stations, which means that there is a fire station for every 21,000 people in Cedar Falls. Moreover, Calamazoo employs 65 firefighters, which means that there is one firefighter for roughly every 1,169 people. With only 24 firefighters in Cedar Falls, that means that there is one firefighter in Cedar Falls for every 1,750 people. If you consider that Calamazoo can rely on the surrounding communities for additional full-time fire support with a 15- to 20-minute response time, it's clear why the Calamazoo model works. They have the resources and the manpower to respond to a fire quickly and successfully. Calamazoo uses their PSO program to supplement their fire department, not replace them. I'm not here to say that the PSO model is a bad model for Cedar Falls. What I am saying is that the city of Cedar Falls, if, if the city of Cedar Falls wants to use the Calamazoo model as the gold standard for a successful PSO program, we should have a minimum of four manned fire stations and employ a minimum of 36 firefighters for the size community that we have. PSOs should be used to supplement firefighters, not replace them. As a business owner myself, I can appreciate efforts to cut expenses by running operations smarter and leaner. However, this is too important to skimp on. Public safety is your number one obligation. Do your job and give this community the level of service that it needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Anyone else further, please? Yes, come on up, sir.
Jeremy Solenick, 1008 Rockland Street. In response to the trailer fire, Ashley, Avery, and Mason are my family. Okay? I know the situation. Avery was hiding in the bathtub, Mason was in his crib, and Ashley was stuck at the front of the trailer. A window was broken out by the PSOs, causing oxygenation of the fire and then it filled with smoke, so Ashley couldn't get herself and back to her children.
Thank you, Mr. Solenick. Anyone further?
Greetings to all of you. I am Jenny Van Doren. I live at 4124 Thrasher Court, Unit 304. My late husband, Tim Skinny Van Doren, was a full-time firefighter from 1968 to 1994. I will be speaking on the PSO program, of which four police officers were promoted to be supervisors of the fire department. To be promoted to a supervisor of police or fire, one must follow the civil service promotion process. The civil service has the following requirements for promotion under the Chapter 400 Code. One is that the job is to be posted with a job description. The second one is the civil service has an interview with the person. Then a written and physical agility test are administered. Have these four items been followed? If so, when, where, and who could see the posting? Did the civil service approve the people that applied for interviews and who did the interviewing? When was the written test administered? Who and what agility test was done? Is the physical agility testing for the police department the same as for the fire department? What are these four supervisor jobs description? The fire department has an active fire chief, fire captain list, and a fire battalion chief certified list. Were these people considered? We are placing police officers to supervisor, supervise over the professional firefighters. Why are you not using the experienced, highly-trained professional firefighters already on the certified fire captain and fire battalion list? Is this not both incredibly dangerous and complete misuse of highly-trained professional firefighters that we already have available to be fire supervisors? How much more will these officers be paid? How much money is spent in equipping, equipping, equipping the PSOs such as the calves in their cars, firefighter gear, and extra pay? I know the PSOs have a fire training one and need to have four hours of training a month. Is that enough to be a supervisor when the full-time firefighters have many, many more hours of training a week? I would, also, as someone mentioned, some of these numbers are incorrect, so you might want to revisit your facts. I would like one now prepared for the police department. You will need to include 11% pay on all PSOs. Cost of training, the money spent on the fire gear that the PSOs need, the calves in the back of their cars. I would like the fire department to have input into this flight. Oh, yes. Why are police officers able to wear body cameras and firefighters can't? I think the cameras could be used to help firefighters evaluate their work. It could show examples of what they did right and what they could do to improve on. Did you remove them because the cameras were showing the failings of the PSO program from the two gentlemen who lost their homes? How did the PSO, who was a firefighter one-trained, fail to recognize the fact that if you park a vehicle with a hot exhaust on a pile of leaves, it will catch fire? Is this not the most basic concept in firefighting? That fuel plus oxygen creates fire? Do you want that person in charge of major fires? My husband was very proud to say they could be at the scene within three minutes of the call coming into the station. They also had seven firefighters at each of the two stations. With the closing of North Cedar Fire Station, some through streets being closed, road construction and more building to the south, that has all changed. Now you leave North Cedar without a fire station and a much longer response. You have already allowed the number of professional firefighters to drop by over one-third where it was 30 years ago, when there were fewer people and less area. With the, what is the minimum number of professional fighters that the city wants to maintain? One last note, how many people will apply to be Cedar Falls firefighters as full-time firefighters? Please retire or resign.
Thank you, Ms. Solenick. Anyone further? Yes, sir. Come on up, please. State your name and address.
Thank you for the honor of being here tonight. My name is Jeffrey Schmidt. I live at 2324 Grundy Road, Cedar Falls. And although I'm not a resident proper of the city, I am within the Cedar Falls Fire Department. District. My background is, I was a senior lieutenant with the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office for thirty years. I've done budgets with the law enforcement through government. I've done training with the sheriff's office for over twenty years. I've done training with the United States Army for over ten years. So I have a little bit of a background in both the budgets and the staffing and training of civil service and military people. I have a couple of questions. And I'm not backing neither the fire department nor the police department, but my questions are more directed towards the budgeting and the need for outside help. Now, most people here probably don't understand the 28E agreement. The 28E agreement is an agreement between municipalities, counties, to help with services. So Waterloo will have a 28E agreement with Cedar Falls Police Department, as does the sheriff. The Cedar Falls Fire Department has a 28E agreement with Hudson, Waterloo, Janesville, Dyke. So with all of this coming about, my question is, is there a letter of understanding with the other agencies that they might be relied upon more to assist either the fire department or the police department? Because it has been my experience as a law enforcement officer for over thirty years that when I have come into the city of Cedar Falls to assist them, and particularly in a accident or a building fire, that was woefully understaffed by law enforcement at late-night hours because they were at other duties, so College Hill, bar fight, house burning over Southdale School, the staffing just wasn't right. And I understand that you're trying to get more PSOs to help in that. My next question then would be, is a PSO arrives at the scene, the first thing they're going to have to do is strip off their law enforcement items. So the shirt comes off, the duty belt comes off, the kevlar comes off. Who's going to be responsible when at two o'clock in the morning, and it will happen, they're going to lose a piece of equipment off their duty belt? It's going to be on the ground, you're going to drive away later on, and then you're going to discover that you don't have your taser or your ASP. Things like that happen. It's not, it's not, it's an accident. It's not on purpose. But then who's going to be responsible for that? The officer going to be responsible for that? That's a question I'd have for the command staff. Also, the law enforcement vehicles are just full of required equipment. How you can fit, and vehicles have gotten smaller, how you can fit all of your law enforcement equipment that you need and fire gear into a law enforcement vehicle is beyond me. I'm from the old school, when you had a car that had fifteen yards of trunk space. You don't have that anymore. Personal observation, since my retirement, I have become full-time employed in the petroleum industry. It just so happened that here about two months ago, I assisted the Cedar Falls Fire Department with training in their PSO staff. It was the exact same training that I had five years ago. Hardly any PSOs were at that training. It was almost full-time fire staff. I can tell you the difference between five years ago and two months ago was a huge difference. It was very discouraging to see how much trouble the PSOs had, lack of training. I'm not discouraging the police department, but they just didn't have enough training. So then that takes me to the line item budget for training for the PSOs. If you have a line item strictly for the PSOs, what's the line item budget for training of the full-time staff that's there right now? Are they having enough training, money for what they need? I know that they probably don't. And I'm sorry to see that. I have friends on both departments. We go back many, many years, decades, but...
How long is that, Mr. Schmidt?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone else in the chamber area? Yes, sir. Come on up. Sorry.
I'm Art Lupkus, 3227 Midway Drive. I've spent a few days or evenings in this council room. I was a retired fire chief. Mr. Mayor, public safety model is not as cost-effective as you claim. That's why the United States, there's probably less than one percent of the career departments that do public safety. And there's some reasons for that. First, the costs are the same for the police and fire, as far as their pension. Well, you tried to bring out the fact that in your bulletin that fire was very expensive. Well, let me tell you, police is more expensive. Secondly, the cost of PSOs for the fire department and for the police department have to have protective equipment for both police and fire. Training takes longer for the PSOs because they're doing two particular jobs, so there's probably an overtime factor there also that needs to be considered. Because the main thing is, the PSOs are paid eleven percent a year more than firefighters and police officers of the same rank. That's about seven thousand dollars a year more. That's a fairly hefty amount of money. Firefighters put in an average work week of fifty-six hours and get paid the same, basically, as what a police officer does for forty hours. That's sixteen hours of pay that they sacrifice while they're responding to calls for service and for the privilege of sleeping in the fire station, if you will, and for being away from their families for twenty-four hours. Four, another fun fact is that firefighters on a twenty-four-hour schedule can save the city about a million dollars a year to staff ten firefighters compared to the police forty-hour shifts. Example, a twenty-four-hour schedule requires thirty firefighters, three shifts of ten each. A forty-hour schedule requires forty firefighters for four shifts with ten firefighters. So that's a saving of ten positions, and ten positions add a hundred thousand dollars is a million bucks. It's hard to see the benefits of public safety when your only goal is to destroy the fire department and to gain more police officers. When I was a chief, we had thirty-three firefighters and forty police officers. That's a total of seventy-three public safety employees. Today, we have twenty-one firefighters and forty-nine police officers. So basically, you've got seventy public safety employees. So I beg you, what is the savings? There isn't any. There's similar costs for police and fire, so where is the holding down the costs that you claim in your brochure? All you've accomplished is to remove fire staff to an unsafe level and put the public at risk. When I stopped at the fire station a week ago, there were five firefighters on duty. I asked how many PSOs were going to respond. There was only one on duty that was going to respond. That's a total of six people. We need at least ten. Now you're going to hire eighteen more people on public safety, and I think that's great. Now, if you really want to make this program work, put fifteen of those on the fire department, open the three stations, and we'll have a shift of ten firefighters responding to an incident. Put the other officers on the police department, and you'd have fifty-two officers. That's twelve more than they had when I started as chief for the police department, and you'd only have three more firefighters than when I, or when I left, not started, but when I left as fire chief. So if you want to make it work, that's the way to work. Because of the twenty-four-hour shift, you're saving a bunch of money.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Mr. Lupkus. Anyone further in chambers? A couple others? Yes, sir. Come up.
Good evening. My name is Larry Herzog, 1604 Baltimore Street, Waterloo. I am Controller of Standard Distribution Company, 317 Savannah Park Road. Wow, what a conversation. I guess the first thing, just sitting here for the last hour or so and listening, I want to thank you for being councilpeople, for your service, and mayor for your service, and staff members for trying to figure out this riddle. Complicated, complicated. Wanted to share a story about an insurance tour that we had at our business about a year ago. A man from Travelers Insurance came through, and we have insurance tours all the time because insurance companies don't want fire. They don't want large, expensive buildings with lots of stuff in it to burn down, so they have a lot of advice on how to take care of a building. And insurance people always are interested, when they tour industrial buildings, to look at fire sprinkler systems. And this fellow was as interested in a fire system as any that I'd seen. And we landed out on North Industrial Park, across from the Waterloo Airport, in Cedar Falls North Industrial Park, at our new building, which has a state-of-the-art sprinkler system. And he was looking at all the dials and gauges, and I said to him, I said, "Well, you sure are interested in the sprinkler system?" He said, "Yeah, we just had some training." Said, "We had a discussion about what to look at as a risk manager when we go and visit an industrial building." And I said, "Oh, well, what happened?" And he said, "They told us about a fire on the east coast at a warehouse building." And there was a fire in the break room in a microwave, and the fire department came, and they put that fire out. And at the same time, ironically, and talk about bad luck, another fire started in a different part of the building and completely burned it to the ground, causing the very largest loss of financial ever in the history of Travelers Insurance Company. It was in the tens of millions of dollars. And so I guess the lesson, the takeaway from that is that a little bit of prevention is really important. And I guess my takeaway, as somebody who wants to maintain safety of the buildings for our employees and myself, is that those inspections that the Cedar Falls Fire Department does every year must be really important, because that's where things like an inadequate or a malfunctioning sprinkler system would be caught. So I want to commend the city for doing those inspections, and I hope that maybe as a function of reorganization, that maybe some more training can be given to those inspectors so that they can be sure that our sprinkler systems are up to snuff.
Anyone further? A gentleman in the back, if you would, please? Name and address.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Mark Woolbright. I'm an International Association of Firefighters Vice President. We're based out of Washington, DC, 1750 New York Avenue, again, Washington, DC, 20006. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the concept of the PSO. In all due respect, it's a flawed and dangerous experiment that we've got going on here. And I'm not here to criticize. What we're here to do tonight is to offer some help, honestly. You know, I'd really like to know the principal objective of what we're trying to accomplish here. If it's money, you know, there's no money that's worth public safety in putting our firefighters, your law enforcement officers, and this fine community at risk. And that appears that that's what's going on here. And I've heard also that this is being turned into a union issue. This is not a union issue. This is a health and safety, a public safety issue. It's our core principle. We represent three hundred and fifteen thousand members across North America, fire, EMS, 911 dispatchers. It's our core principle as an organization to make sure that our members go home safe every day to their families. It's also yours, the same, same principle, the same philosophy as public officials, the decision-makers of this fine city. So I ask, what research was done to come to this conclusion? What study? Did we have an, did we outsource this? Was there a consultant? What's the strategy? Do we have measurement performances in place? Is there an impact study? Has there been an impact study? What's been done? We would like that to be public. We want to see how you all arrived to this. And I'm just going to be completely blatantly honest, in all due respect. You don't have this type of showing when you're doing a good job. There's concerns here. This is a big deal. And the International Association of Firefighters stand...
I'd have to ask, please, this gentleman has the right to be able to be heard, as does the council, to listen to him.
We stand behind these, our members here in Cedar Falls. We have some really, really strong concerns on, again, not only the health and safety of our members, but also this community. This community that, and I'm not going to be redundant, I'm back here taking notes because I didn't want to repeat myself, and I don't want to take too much time, because there's a lot of citizens that, they're the boss here. The taxpayers, the community, the citizens, they should be the ones that you're listening to, even more so than me. But what we're offering here is, and by the way, I don't know if you want to look up on firecares.org. That's a calamitous of organizations, kind of like the NFPA, National Fire Protection and District Association, which sets guidelines. Firecares, and I'll come back to NFPA, Firecares puts your rating based on the hazards in your community, on how your fire department's doing or has done. Pay attention to that, because right now you're ranked a meager fair. Fair. And again, you know, this is a tremendous concern of ours. NFPA, right now, you're not properly staffed right now and haven't been with firefighters, professionally-trained firefighters. And again, it puts everybody at risk. Every major organization with law enforcement and fire is opposed to this concept. And truth be told, if they can speak, most all firefighters and police officers are also. It's, we do some dual training, but it's fire and EMS. It's not fire and law enforcement and police. It just doesn't work. There's a reason why ninety-nine percent of this country have dual roles, and only one percent is attempting or has attempted to do what you folks here are doing or trying to do. We're very concerned on how this is going to end. And again, what I would offer is to work with the International Association of Firefighters or law enforcement and get an outside, independent, third-party consultant expert to come in and assess what you have going on and get some help on putting this together, so we don't have to use all of our resources, which we're willing to do from Washington, DC, to bring out here, to educate your folks and your fine community on how bad this is. Let's get together. If you're willing to do it, and we'll work with you through it to a good mean end result to where we're not going to lose lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further this evening in the council chambers? What I will do, what I will do is open up for folks to come in and speak. Sir, do you have a question or a statement? Sir, do you have a question or a statement? Okay, please, come on. Yeah, I didn't want you to get lost there in terms of bringing folks in.
A little delayed. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brown and esteemed council members. My name is Ryan Howard, ten twenty-nine Amelia Drive here in Cedar Falls. I've been here for about ten years. I'm a little bit new to this discussion, this debate. But I've heard some really interesting things tonight, I think, and also some of my own research leading up to it. First, I thank you for your hard work. I know, I think, I've seen, watching everybody here, you're listening very attentively. And I appreciate that. So thank you for that. I think this last gentleman here and one of the young ladies that spoke earlier gave some good numbers tonight. I work at a, a large employer in the area. And part of my job is to analyze our suppliers and their businesses and what they're doing to keep supply coming to us. And so whenever things come up, some of the things that I have to look for is, I may not be a hundred percent familiar with their business or what's going on. But what I do look for is when they're making decisions about their business or things that I may not fully understand, that I see a demonstrated robustness in their analysis and their evaluation. And I think that was brought up here just recently. When we look at different businesses and comparing different things, we need to be apples to apples. We need to make sure that we understand and adjust for variables that are different. And it seems like, I, I must say, tonight I don't have confidence that that sort of analysis has been done to that depth. I think we've heard some good proposals tonight. I think we've got a good baseline of data and numbers to get started with and to, and to move forward, to take the discussion in the right place. One of the things I was disappointed to hear was firefighters leaving. And I don't know all the details behind that. But I do know that when I was growing up, I heard more about firefighters waiting to get a job and trying to get on, not, not leaving. And so I was disappointed to hear that. We heard some emotional things that draw on the heartstrings a little bit, I think. And, and this is a very important topic. I think that the, what can happen if this is done wrong is, it's, it's a big deal if, if it goes the wrong direction. So I think we saw some good numbers. And like I said, and so one of the, I read somewhere where it says, "Our citizens are our business." And so I think that that motto is a good, a good way to look and go forward. And so I think that we understand this PSO can be good to supplement, not replace a program. But I also must say that regardless of where we start, but where we end up, it needs to be, I would like to see as a citizen here, a clear, robust analysis. And just, this is such a hot-button topic. I just would love to have a lot of confidence in the decision and what was used to come up with that decision. So I thank you for your time and yield.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the chambers before we open it up for folks in overflow? And if, there's empty seats up here too, Lisa, but anyone can come up, please, from that we've been waiting on or that you've been waiting on? Hang on a few, hang on one second, Sharon. Lisa, is there, there's maybe, how many chairs over here, folks? One, two, or three? Three there on this side. There's three in front here. We have room for six folks? Seven folks? If you don't mind. Thank you. We'll, we'll hold off it there, Lisa, and just see if folks come up. Thank you very much. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Reginald. I reside at one oh eight Lily Putt Lane. I am a retired Cedar Falls firefighter. I'm the one who put in the request for the public forum on your agenda for tonight, which was denied. And in response to that, you read the letter, that, the letter of denial. I've also prepared a letter in response to that letter. We're gonna go back and forth on this. So I'd like to read that at this time.
Please.
Dear Mayor Brown, we are disappointed to receive your letter in which you denied our request for a public forum. We believe that your reasons are flawed because they are not completely based on factual information. We would like to take a moment to respond to the three reasons you gave for refusing to put a vote for a public forum on the agenda. You stated that a public forum would not be a productive meeting inside at the history of the mid-nineties. This leads us to believe that you are not open to hearing from both sides. If you have already decided how this will end, you are not listening to your citizens. If you will not take a moment to hear our concerns, who are you working for? You are an elected official who is supposed to represent the citizens. You claim that we are a group that will barrage your staff. And you believe that we will only divide our great community. You also accuse us of denying facts presented by you. We have never once barraged any member of your staff. You've never actually met any of us. This is in resp, or I'm speaking on behalf of the Stand Up For Safety for Cedar Falls. And you have never actually met all of us face-to-face. So this claim is completely false. You claim you are presenting full facts, but time and time again, we've disproved them. The definition of a fact is a thing that is indisputable. We watched your video and we noticed a few facts of the squad car that caught fire during homecoming. First of all, the firefighter one trained PSO parked over dry leaves. That's been brought up before. The PSOs did not wear their protective firefighting gear. The PSOs were unable to completely extinguish the fire with the CAF system and a garden hose. The PSOs were unable to open the hood of the car. What was not shown, because your video only included a partial view of the scene, is that the Cedar Falls firefighters pulled an inch and three-quarter line to completely douse the engine compartment and leaves to avoid rekindle. In basic firefighter training, it is common knowledge that a car fire is not completely extinguished until the hood is up and the engine has been doused. Last, you claim that the Stand Up For Safety Cedar Falls is registered at an address in Hudson and is administered by a current Cedar Falls firefighter and his spouse. Everything about this statement is incorrect. We have officially registered as a PAC. And the two individuals providing their address and phone numbers on the official government documents are both citizens of Cedar Falls. We are not sure where you're getting your information from, but it's, it's completely untrue. After providing additional clarification in response to your concerns, we would like again to request that you add an item agenda for the November nineteenth, two hundred and eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, excuse me, Cedar Falls City Council meeting, in which the council will vote for a public forum, in which the citizens of Cedar Falls can be presented with both sides of the public safety issue. You will find, and I plan on mailing this letter to you so you have it officially, but another request for that. Thank you for your time.
Anyone further that came in or anyone else have terms of—
Good evening. My name is Dustin Gannfield. I live at seven twenty-six Mocker Road. First, I'd like to express my gratitude for civil servants on our council here, as well as you, Mr. Mayor, and to our law enforcement and our fire employees. It was not my intention to be divisive in any measure. But I feel that having moved to Cedar Falls a year ago because it is a city that has a tradition of excellence, I wanted to remind us of our shared goals. You guys have heard of Steve Jobs. Everyone has an iPhone or knows of them. His quote was, "Don't do everything. Do one thing really well." That's my goal for firefighters and police officers. When I was a kid and asked, "What did I want to be when I grow up?", one of those answers would be firefighter until a certain age. But I don't hear that as much anymore. And I'm not trying to deride any current personnel. But with our current political climate and the politic that goes on in our world, I don't think that we need to diminish the capacity of our firefighters or our police to do their job well. If you're a jack of all trades, you'll be a master of none. Walt Disney said that you should do one thing so well, that, this is a rough paraphrase, that when people see you doing it, they not only want to see you do it again, but they want to participate. And they want to come back and see it done again and again and again. I want us all to get back to the shared goal of making sure that firefighter is something that kids want to be. That police officer is someone that kids want to be. That they aspire to a tradition of excellence, such as we have here in Cedar Falls. I moved here because of that. I see great communities around us that we, as a matter of fact, are doing no service when we tell them we did not use their services for certain incidents over the last year. We don't have the support of our surrounding communities in this initiative. It's a disappointment, certainly. But I can see their point, that it's not excellent. And to some of the other gentlemen's points, this is not going well. The hallways are lined with at least a hundred more people that showed up because this isn't what they want. And I would reiterate that you all serve at the pleasure of the people who elected you. You work for us. This is not your initiative to say, "We know what's best for you peons." But that is frankly how you've made us feel with your bullying. A pamphlet that uses my money to put out half-truths, only half of any possible truth, to mainly say we're better in our idea is inexcusable. You ought to be ashamed of it. I demand better. And I would presuppose that our voting public will come next election time, unless you grant a public forum, present all the facts, and stop as, acting as if we're too dumb to figure out what's going on. Can you do that for us? I thank you for your abilities. I thank you for your surrender of your own freedoms to serve us. So remember, you're serving us. And in closing, I wasn't going to, but I would like to pray for our city and our council. So our Father God, we graciously ask your blessing on these folks that serve us so well. We humbly ask that you would guide and direct our hearts and our words and our actions in this forum to come. I ask that you would make it happen quickly and that the outcomes would be shared and that we could all celebrate the tradition of excellence that you've blessed us with here in Cedar Falls and that we would glorify you with the proceedings throughout. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in chambers?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Tully. I'm the president and CEO of Aerial Services out on Chancellor Drive in Cedar Falls Industrial Park. Our firm just celebrated our fiftieth year here in Cedar Falls. We have fortunately never needed the services of the fire department. And have always appreciated their very professional and thorough site inspections of our office. Look around, ladies and gentlemen. There's a fire in the public safety office. I have little expertise in the firefighting science, but it's clear to me as a citizen and as, and as a professional that there is sustained public distrust, confusion, and doubt over this issue for the reasons so eloquently stated here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a fire in the public safety office. You have impugned the integrity of my professional firefighter friends. And by gagging the rest, you demonstrate the weakness of your position. As a longtime business owner employing dozens of professionals, I request that you commit to standing up a public and expert panel representing all sides to discuss the merits and demerits of the Cedar Falls PSO experiment. Or just put the fire out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Folks, I will remind you, please, everyone has the same respect to come up and to be heard, please. Anyone else, Lisa?
Hello, I'm Richard Hines. I live at twelve nineteen Western Avenue in North Cedar. First of all, I'd like to bring up that if you're gonna do all this stuff with these POs and get more firemen, let's open our North Cedar Fire Station up. I want to tell you, November first, two thousand and fourteen, I was a victim of a fire out there that almost took my life. I spent three months down in Iowa City in the burn unit. I got fifty-eight percent of my body with second and third degree burns. I spent two and a, three months down there, two and a half months. I was in a medical reduced coma. And then when I got back to Waterloo to cover it, I spent five and a half months in physical therapy. And I want to tell every one of you right now, you don't want to ever burn. Have your body burnt because it's a very painful thing. And I ask you guys to think this over and make sure you have the proper firemen out in North Cedar and all the other fire stations. I want to ask another question. What are you gonna do with the Main Street Fire Station when you get this new one open? Is that gonna close? Can you tell me that?
Your question will be considered after you speak, sir. Thank you very much.
That's what I want to know. Please, think it over. Because I tell you what, I'm still dealing with my burns every day. And it's not fun. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone further, Lisa?
Good evening. I'm Sarah Langle. I live at thirteen twelve Windsor Drive. I appreciate the time tonight. I know it's getting late and it's warm in here. Wanted to say a couple of things. I have a couple of questions. And one of the first things I have, maybe we can have a public forum. That would be great because maybe these questions would be better answered in a public forum. One of the first things, I understand that the Cedar Falls Fire Department was visited by the insurance services organization shortly after Waterloo was. If I understand correctly, the Waterloo has released their ISO rating. I am curious what Cedar Falls ISO rating will be as of January first. I'm just gonna take a wild guess, but if our ISO rating goes higher and everyone's homeowner's insurance goes up, I'm kind of guessing that our city council hall will be even more filled up than it is tonight. I think we'll have a few residents that will be quite upset. Another question that I've been wondering about is I've thought about this PSO program for the last couple of years. Maybe you can help me understand this. I'm wondering how you get fire apparatus to the scene? How the PSOs do it? From my understanding, PSOs have the CAF in their trunk of their car. It's attached to a fifty-foot hose. When they get to the scene, they have to be within fifty feet of the fire. It doesn't seem very logical to me, or it seems like it would be damaging to be within fifty feet. The car would be damaging to the car and to them with, to be within fifty feet of that fire. So I'm just kind of trying to play that out in my head, how that, how that all works. Are PSOs qualified to operate fire apparatus? How long does it take for them to drive to the fire station? And then drive to the scene, if that's the case? Would it be more cost-effective? Would it be faster for them just to be at the fire station? Is that, or is that the plan when the new public safety building is built? Will they be all there? Right now, it doesn't seem like we're getting to the fire scene or the scene of the, of the call very quickly, especially with the Nordic Ridge. We heard someone tonight say that it was ten minutes and then twenty minutes. We heard someone tonight say that it was 10 minutes and then 20 minutes. Also, I think everybody has seen the video of the Beaver Ridge Fire, where it was 15 minutes before they were allowed entry into the house. I think that's unacceptable. Another question I have is, we've heard Director Olson and Chief Bostwick say on several occasions that they don't follow the NFPA guidelines. They've also said that a lot of agencies don't follow the NFP guidelines. I understand that a lot of agencies cannot follow them completely due to cost constraints, but they do get as close to them as they possibly can. So my question is, if you don't follow them, where do you base your decisions on? What are you using to base your decisions on? What do you use as a guide? Also, along with those same lines, could you provide us with a list of the 20 cities you called? Chief Bostwick said that he called 20 cities in Iowa that don't follow the NFPA recommendations. So I would like to have a list of those 20 cities. I think that would be interesting to know which other cities don't follow that and where they are formulating their decisions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langle. Anyone further for public discussion, public comment? Lisa? Anyone further? Okay. Okay, now now close off this portion of the public comment. Open it up for council to comments or questions to staff or to each other. Mr. Whelan?
Would this be an appropriate time to take a short break?
Be more than happy to. We will take a five-minute break. Let's just make it at the 5 till the 11, the 11:00. And then we'll sit back down and finish from here.